We are moving on, so the next part under reports is the open letter. Um trustee Watson, I believe you asked for this to be added to the agenda. Would you like to ask a question on it?
Sure, um I was wondering before I asked a question, can we get um some sort of report as to why, why we or why staff decided to issue the open letter? And um as you know, and who is the open letter from? So if we could get some information as to why, and then then I have I have my question.
Okay, um would you like to respond?
Uh through you chair, uh with regards to why uh we issued the open letter? Um uh the the issue was referred to staff. Um and so as per practice, staff was addressing the issues that were in there. A part of the concerns was around transparency with the wider community. And so as a part of that, we made it.
I can't hear. Can you put your microphone up?
It's on.
Can you bring it closer?
Yeah, sure. There you go. Can you hear now?
Yes.
Yeah, um so I'll I'll just start over through you chair. Uh the issue was referred to staff, and as per practice, we were addressing the questions that were raised. Um as a part of the concerns that were raised, the issue of transparency were with the community was raised, and so we issued the letter openly to the entire community. With regards to the um uh the question, who wrote the letter? Or who is the letter from? So you can imagine an an organization our size that that there's um a lot that goes into it. So if I can ask uh for those from whom it's from, if you could just identify yourself, maybe just by standing so uh so that the trustees could see.
So it's good. It's fair to say everyone, the everyone here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So trustee Watson, would you like to ask your first question? And then I have trustee Pyatowski, and then trustee Ramsey and trustee Meisner. Okay, go ahead.
So the reason that um I wanted this on the agenda is because all of my time on the board, I have never seen a parent, any any parent responded to in this way. Um we have referred a number of issues to staff, and usually it's done with email. Um I was completely shocked. I, this is the first time I I've ever ever experienced anything like this. I I felt that um this new, again, I didn't give my permission. I wasn't asked. Um but if I had been asked, I would have said, I would think that this would be too excessive and would appear heavy handed for us to use all of our social media to counter legitimate concerns, legitimate parental concern. I've been on this board for twenty two years, and I can say age appropriateness has been the number one concern of parents when it has anything to do with sexual health, whether it's guidelines, whether it's a survey, whether it's a presentation, whether it's um anything having to do with sexual health. That's just the norm. Uh parents have always been concerned. And when I read the open letter, um you know, there were parts in in it that I wondered, and I'm not sure who wrote this part, but um so I'm gonna ask my question about this part. Um so it says, um it says that the section where it mentions about the bluest eye, it says in this report, and I guess I don't know who, it states that the the that the bluest eye is not available in WRDS school. But then it goes on to state it's available online to student to our student population, which appears to be a contradiction. I'm assuming it's on Chromebook, which means it's still in our schools, but it's on on the Chromebook. And then it goes on to state that although the suggested reading level is grade four and five, the audience for this book is adolescent. It doesn't say what the adolescent age is. But according to the World Health Organization, an adolescent is ten to nineteen. So what age and what grade does the do we as a board, as a a staff, recommend the bluest eye to children in our board? Because I don't know what your definition of an adolescent is.
Um you want to take that? Thank you.
Through the chair, just before I pass this to associate director Shans, um I just want to clarify trustee Watson in in this uh comments that you are making on age appropriateness and sexual health that um I would agree with you that parents would have concerns around issues of sexual health. Um the issue of sexual orientation and gender identity is not the same as that. Um and those are both uh protected grounds under the Charter of Rights and Freedoms and the Human Rights Code, which we're meant to uphold. So there would be a difference there that we just want to be mindful of. Um I'd like to just.
Associate Director Shans, can I answer your question?
Through the chair to trustees, uh when we look at collections in libraries and libraries within school settings or in the public, they are just that, they are collections. And I I want us to be very careful not to be focusing in on a specific age. When we walk into our libraries in a K to six school, we don't have a grade one collection, a grade two collection, a grade three collection. They are collections that students can can access as we move forward. Same would apply to our K to eight schools and our secondary schools. The question was raised regarding our online resources. Because of the nature of the online resources, those are available to all of our students. And due to the the uh due to the interest of students and other things along those lines, students are able to access a variety of text within those those collections.
So just to follow up. Thank you. So just a follow up. First of all, I'm talking about age appropriateness and parents who have come forward talking about age appropriateness. So I, to be clear, that's what I'm talking about. And so when we look at the 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 open letter, it says it's not intended for grade four and five, but it is for adolescents. And unless we identify that, parents aren't going to understand. My concern is that when parents come forward, this is can be the most intimidating experience when they walk into this boardroom. They walk up here all alone. I did it as a parent, and I came forward like as a parent twenty two years ago about age appropriateness. And it had it had it was a and it had to do with sexual content. That's how I got introduced to school board. Walking up to the podium can be a very intimidating experience. And so when a parent comes forward and they bring their concern, I could not imagine that I would be addressed. I mean, it would be overwhelming to be addressed by all of these staff members. We we have had multiple discussions at this board table over the years about what do parents feel when they when they stand here and they address this board and they see a line of suits? All of these people have so much more than them just walking up with their opinion and their concerns. And so I want to make it very clear that I I did not support that open letter. I will never support the open letter uh process. I hope it never happens again. I think it was excessive, and I and I feel very badly for parents who venture out, who have to work, get come here at night, sit through a a meeting, and it's already intimidating. And so my question was, if we're not gonna identify what an adolescent is, and if we're not going with the World Health Board, or you know, how how are parents supposed to know what's age appropriate or not? So I guess my question is, what is what is an adolescent? Well, as a board, I mean, if we're going to write an open letter, what is the age appropriateness? We we're recommending these resources. We have them on our Chromebooks. What age of the child are we hearing this to?
Okay, uh associate director Shans?
Through the chair to trustees, if the question is focusing on what is an adolescent, then we would suggest that in the brain, the range of age thirteen to fourteen and up. And I I would remind trustees that that would include students in our elementary panel.
Okay, thank you, associate director Shans. Trustee Pyatowski?
Uh thank you, uh through you. Um I will note that I I voted against the motion to uh refer this issue to to staff. I I thought that uh some of the delegates' remarks uh were unfair, inaccurate, uh even offensive, referring specifically to uh facilitating child abuse, which is tremendously unfair to our entire board, to our our staff. Having said that, um I of course understand the obligation of all trustees to uphold decisions of the board, and the majority of trustees voted to refer this to staff. Uh I think it was entirely appropriate for the letter that was written in response to the delegates' concerns to uh to be released. Uh the uh this is an issue that was covered by Fox News, uh local uh uh Canadian online media as well. And uh you know, it uh it was being widely discussed. I think it is appropriate for our response to be out there in the public domain as as well. Uh there was nothing in the letter that uh that I found inaccurate. Uh I thought it was extremely helpful in terms of clarifying the issues raised by the the delegate.
Thank you, trustee Pyatowski, trustee Ramsey?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Um uh without repeating what my colleague trustee Watson pointed out, I'll start off by saying I I fully support her remarks and all that to that uh um by voicing my concern with the the lack of respect for the under role of um parents in the lives of their children. And then saying that, I guess my question is, because I have this huge concern that um we live on a governance issue at this board in the sense that the board of trustees on the sixteenth of uh January at our meeting, um as trustee Watson pointed out, the delegation came in, they made their delegation. Uh there was a vote to refer the matter to staff. And prior to that decision of the board on the sixteenth of January being ratified, this was a committee of the whole meeting. Someone, and I'm hearing that our sole employee ordered out, and there's a whole bunch of staff here that stood up and said that um confirmed that they're part of um the 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 development of this open letter. But I'm speaking now to and the question I guess to a sole employee, director of education, as to where the authority was derived from to house this open letter to this, the letter being um uh positive report coming back to the board. So basically, there's action taken without board approval. And I'd like to know, um with regard to the governance issues that it raises, where the authority was derived from, notwithstanding who agrees with the contents of the letter, which I vehemently disagree with, um how this um parent was attacked in everything but name. Uh but I think it's very clear as to who it was directed at. So that said, I'd I'd I would like an answer. Who signed off? I'm not satisfied with some of the communications that has um uh took place over the weekend, uh where it was being pointed out that um um certain board members were consulted. And that they signed out. But the fact is, we never had a this uh an opportunity to 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 read in. And this, the news might as well not come on at the end of the month because this the the decision was never ratified. I'm not satisfied with the um uh I I would classify as a um uh re-justification of something that ever did take place. But that said, um I am still, um I guess my follow up question, I see that's just one follow up, is that if someone could elaborate then what the seeing that um students can access um that the book that was the subject of the the delegation, and I wonder if someone could um just educate a little bit further as to that, what the learning objectives, for the um the the grade that the parent identified, what their learning objectives are, and if it includes access. And by the way, I just want to point that it's nothing to do with the the author. I I was a very respected um author. It's about, as trustee Watson pointed out, age appropriateness. And the you know, it's the the book is very graphic and uh so the learning objectives, could someone someone comment on that, please? The 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 grade that the parent pointed, I believe it was that grade, grade four, grade four.
Thank you, associate director Shans?
Through the chair to trustees, uh a reminder to trustees that libraries serve a couple functions within our school system. One of those are curricular resources that teachers may utilize or educators may utilize in the direct instruction of students. There's also other materials that are are materials that are utilized for interest reading and other access points for students as well. So I I believe it's important for us to realize that not every document in there will be used in direct instruction or be directly linked to curriculum expectations as we move forward.
Thank you. Uh trustee Meisner?
I'm hearing a number of things being argued here about particulars of what we'd heard from the delegate. We sat patiently, we listened to the delegate and what he had to say. We passed the motion, which I did vote against, to forward to staff and then allow them to have an opportunity to answer that. And in my idea, what I saw as the open letter, I want to thank staff for creating that and posting that open letter. Because in in the interest of transparency, what you did was provide, make your responses available to everyone served by this board. And in my experience, the response to this open letter that I've seen and heard has been overwhelmingly positive. Yes, there are people who are going to have, but we, they're going to have some naysayer. The letter clearly and concisely addresses each concern that the delegate raised, as well as outlining the mandates, the policies, the code of conduct that the board has diligently followed. But it also makes clear that families, parents, caregivers who feel that they don't want to participate in the survey have the right to opt out of it. I think the staff did a wonderful job, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, trustee Meisner. Trustee Cody?
I agree with my fellow trustees Ramsey and uh Watson. I don't agree with the way the letter was handled. I felt it was very heavy handed. Um as this letter reflects, every, not only the board, but everybody in the staff and trustees. And I don't still agree with it. Um it takes a lot, I'm nervous here myself, being a first time trustee. I can only imagine how a parent feels about how the reading material his children are reading off tablets or at the library. Um for us to dismiss, he's not a professional. I'm not a professional. I have to understand where this person's coming from, and I can relate to where this person's coming from. I think as professionals in this room, we should have been maybe, not with kid gloves, but be more patient in our approach. Be, I felt it was very, very heavy handed. I had several phone calls over the weekend, and people were just saying like, what? No, I I couldn't give them an explanation. I had no idea this letter was coming out. I was caught totally off guard. I had, like, I had to read the thing like three or four times. And people are still phoning me, and I I have no answer. I have no explanation. I don't know who or where all this all came from, from a one person trying to set maybe you guys' motions up. I don't know. I'm not that person. But I know how I feel right now. Uh it's a very nerve wracking experience. And I can appreciate that. And I think we should have maybe, you know, kicked it back a notch. How refrain from being so heavy handed and boom, 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 and this is the way it is? I'm sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. Um trustee Johnson?
Oh, thank you very much. Um um I would just like to say, I I too did not initially support the letter going to staff. I felt that the uh presentation was full of some deeply, deeply troubling inaccuracies and false accusations. And I sat patiently and bit my lip and let that person. I would like to quote the final line of that. Um and I I did not want the letter to go to staff because I did not want the staff to have the burden of feeling like we all took these accusations seriously because they were quite disturbing. And I did not want that weight put on the staff. As it turned out, the staff turned it around. And I'm very proud to see that it was made public, considering how much traction this issue has had in the press. And I just want to finish off with one of the statements in that letter that I thought was beautiful. Any child in WRDSB belongs here. We believe in the human rights of all students, staff, and families that we serve. Thank you, staff.
Trustee Johnson, trustee Woodcock?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Um I I didn't have a problem with the uh bastard of the response. And um I I've been a trustee for about nineteen years, and yes, it's not um it's a it's different to have um an open letter go out to the public. The de- the delegation appeared in public. The information was referred to staff. Staff using a um, I I like the way that they uh addressed the issue through um for transparency reasons. And I want to thank staff for doing it that way. Because it does, it it did um clarify some of the, what I interpret to be misconceptions and misinformation that was in the delegate's uh presentation. Uh that's my opinion. We all have respectful, we can have this discussion in a respectful manner. And we are going to disagree. Um I uh I thank the staff for the response. I have heard positive um input from around the province, from other trustees who are and other boards who are watching this um this unfold. And they have indicated that they appreciate the fact in the letter. And um I, it hasn't all been out of it. I just think that um my opinion is that the letter hit the mark, and it was a good response. Staff were were showed, were given the um task of responding. They've always responded this way in to previous things when when we've asked them to respond to a delegate question. They go ahead and do it. Times are changing. I'm I'm an old trustee. Okay, let me say, experienced trustee. And I and things have to change because the world is changing around us. And we can't just keep do doing things the same way that we've always done. It's important that this board be transparent in um how why, how they're following policy, why we're following policy. And uh I I I support the the concept of the open letter.
Thank you. Okay, uh next on my speaking list, I have trustee Radlin, then student trustee Reina, and trustee Waseem. And then I'll go to second speakers. Trustee Radlin?
Thank you, through you chair. I wonder if the director could share with us um what the concerns were and why it was decided to make the statement in this way.
Director Shonika?
Through you chair. Um I do appreciate that people are concerned about uh the the parent who delegated. I would always want all parents to feel that they're able to come forward and share concerns. But there has to be a line. And that line has to be around the human rights of all of the students that we serve. We had a delegation where not only was it concerns that were raised, staff were being accused of child abuse, the implications of it was actually quite heinous and problematic, significantly problematic. And I would hope that this board, and I'm speaking as the CEO right now, would be concerned about all the leaders around this table who have worked tirelessly to make sure that students and families are well-served. And we are governed by a college that is legislated and cares legislated. And to have someone in the boardroom accuse us of child abuse and to imply that we're trying to hide things from parents, which has been a carefully cloaked and veiled sentiment that has been happening over the last year, that is targeting 2S LGBTQ identifying students under the guise of age appropriateness, but singling them out where we know that it's impacting their health, impacting their well-being. And so while I am concerned and I want to make sure that we continue to have conversations, it cannot be at the cost of children. And it cannot be at the cost of families who also deserve to be here. And the language that's being used is inflammatory. It is being propagated on social media. We've had community leaders who support 2S LGBTQ identifying children across this region come to us and say that children are feeling unsafe, that they are becoming suicidal, that they don't feel that they can stay here. I would also hope that that is a concern for every one of us in this room. You know, it's been interesting watching how this has been unfolding. So I'm just going to point to a couple of things again in my, so that the entire board is aware. So this, I'm going to say this from the US because it seems like a lot of things from the US are here right now. Center for Disease Control, speaking about 2S LGBTQ identifying young people, said that in order for them to thrive, they need to feel socially, emotionally, and physically safe and supported. And they are at greater risk for depression, suicide than heterosexual youth. In a report by EGAL Canada, they talk about why it has to do with internalized stigma, concealment of identity, fear of rejection, enacted violence for trans children, there's an increase in violence. 2S LGBTQ identifying people are five to ten times more likely to attempt suicide than cisgender, cisgender and heterosexual individuals. Trans, when they did a survey of trans youth, thirty-six percent of them aged fourteen to eighteen and eleven percent of those aged nineteen to twenty-five had attempted suicide in the past year. I cannot sit here, nor can any of the leaders in this room, and not understand that we have to make sure that any conversation that we have must be inclusive of 2S LGBTQ identifying children. We have had numerous messages over the weekend and letters including from teachers and parents thanking us for the stance to let them know that they belong here and that their children are safe. So having a conversation for us on age appropriateness is one thing. To have that at the expense and the cost of 2S LGBTQ children, again, as the CEO, I would advise that we have a duty to uphold the Human Rights Code. When our actions are counter to that, we open ourselves up to liability and to risk, and more importantly, to the loss of children who have forever been marginalized in the school system. We as leaders, making sure that we uphold the code, ministry direction, and the policies of this board, made a decision to make sure that while we will answer the questions, even though they were inflammatory and fear and problematic, that at the same time, we would do so in a way that would allow children and families to know that if they are here in WRDSB, they belong here. We believe that. We believe in all of them and we want them to be successful and to be able to be the best that they can be.
You, Director Shonika. Follow-up trustee Radlin?
Yes, just to say that, thank you for that response. And I, it indicates that this was a thoughtful response. It was not something done without thought and reflection and above all, concern for the students whom we serve. I'd also like to say, I fully commend the nature of your response because it is important that, as the director just pointed out, that our community fully understands our requirements under the Human Rights Code and under ministry legislation. This is not an option or something that you do if you like it or don't like it. I would also like to point out that although the questions and the delegation was inflammatory, the answers were not. The answers addressed each concern individually and answered the question as it was asked. I think it is important that the public be informed. And I think the appreciation shown by many indicates that this was the correct response. Thank you to staff and to the director.
Trustee Radlin. Student trustee Reyna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the trustees. When I read this letter multiple times, I found it to be rather an explanation and rather than an attack or disvaluing, as some trustees have thought of it as. And I think it was an appropriate action. I understand why some are calling it a little headstrong, but I think when dealing with such big accusations that are not true whatsoever, I think it is very important to to address them in this way. As well, there may be more parents out there that are misinformed, not know. And I think having a public response that can be easily referred to is very important so that they can understand that this survey, you can opt out of it or anything like that. And there are more options than just, you know, students taking that route. So I think it was very important and very good that it was public. And yeah, it's not a justification, but rather I'd say further information by the board. And yeah, I completely second what trustee Radlin said, that human rights is not a choice. And as a board, we say that we will, you know, we want quality education for our students. Well, I think this is the way we get it, by making sure everyone feels welcome. And without that, how can we even think to have a functioning school system? So yeah, I really do commend the open letter. So thank you.
Thank you, student trustee Reyna. Trustee Waseem.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Chair. Something interesting is after that board meeting where the delegate shared their concerns, I voted in favor of referring the concerns to staff so that staff could address them as the delegate had asked for. There were multiple articles that went up and were highlighting this delegate's concerns. And at that point, it was a very public conversation. And I really want to emphasize that point about it being public. It was beyond just us. It was being covered by multiple news outlets across the province of Ontario. People everywhere across this province, whoever was reading those articles, was hearing about the concerns of this delegate. And that's why I think it's very fair that we have a public response to clarify our responsibilities, our duties to uphold as a board in this public manner. I do not think it's appropriate for us to be going back and forth about whether this is okay to respond to publicly or not, given that the matter had become public. We handle a lot of concerns that are brought forward to the board, whether it's about new schools, whether it's about zoning, whether it's about traffic safety. We put them up on our social medias. There's not always a singular point person. But when we hear concerns from the community, we respond to those concerns using our social media outlets, using our website. Because unlike the people sitting in this room, not everyone is going to be here for five hours or four hours sitting through a meeting. Not everyone can do that. Most people need a quick five-minute Google search or less. The average attention span of a teenager these days is like seven to fourteen seconds tops. So if you think anyone is going to be watching the entirety of this meeting to see what went down, they're not. They're going to be taking people's words for what they said or what went down through articles. Whatever they see on social media, whatever is quoted on Twitter, whatever they see on Instagram. I don't want students, I don't want staff, and I don't want families and guardians of this board to be concerned about their education. I don't want them to be concerned about our school's commitment to the success of our students. That is why I think it's important and appropriate that we addressed the many concerns, the very public concerns brought forward to us in this public way through this open letter.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Waseem. Okay, I think everybody has spoken for the first time that wanted to. Oh, sorry. Student trustee Sore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I would like to stress that because the delegate's concerns were expressed publicly, it is vital that the board responds just as publicly. We have already seen the harm that occurs to members of the WRDSB community back in January of last year, when the board does not transparently express its stance in fear of perpetrating more harm. Once again, a lack of transparency creates a void that is quickly filled up with much more harmful narratives. As a representative of the WRDSB student body, I commend the board for being open and transparent and in fact, wish that we had used this approach in the past. I hope that we can move forward with a similar mindset. Thank you.
Thank you, student trustee Sore. Okay, trustee Watson for the second time.
Thank you. So I'd like to start by saying, and I think we'd all agree on this, that all students belong and all students are valued. The concern is that parents are, especially with sexual health topics, whether it's a presentation, whether it's a survey, whether it's the curriculum guidelines, regardless, it's very highly charged. So for example, right now, we have a presentation going on in our schools. It's called Real Time. I don't know anything about it, but I know I've been receiving calls from parents because permission slips aren't going out. That's a concern. And yet I've emailed and I'm not getting the response, that I'm not, I'm not hearing anything. I'm not hearing any information. So I'll have to do another follow-up. But the concern is that when the delegate came forward, one of the issues was this particular book and its age appropriateness. Now, what staff are saying, they're saying the book is geared to thirteen to fourteen. Well, then, that appears to be a legitimate concern that was brought forward. And yet, we hear, you know, I'm not seeing that in the response because there was some miscommunication. The parent was under, under the impression it was for grade four and five. So when we talk about transparency, that is a good thing. But when we gave the motion, it said that what we need to do is give this to staff first, before bringing a motion. Give this to staff and staff can deal with the parent. Staff can deal with issues. With the parent, if you read the motion over again, it's with the parent. It's not with Waterloo region. So when we start veering and we decide we're going to do something brand new, we're going to use all our power, all our social media power, and we're going to respond to the entire region. That needs to be a decision made at this board table. It wasn't. We said the parent. The motion says the parent. It doesn't say the region. It doesn't say use all your social media to respond to this parent and the region. So that is, that is a huge concern. And when trustee Johnson was offended by the wording that the parent had the audacity to read, imagine how that parent felt. When he, the parent isn't, any parent, when they're talking about age appropriateness, they're not even connected to the system. They're reading this in their own home. Imagine the, what they felt. That's the, that's, and as trustee Cody talked about, put yourself in the parent. I know that this is your job and you live and breathe, but put yourself in the parent's shoes and their child and their experience. And what their, what their age appropriate level is for their child, because they know their child the best. So I have another question about the, according to the open letter, it states that these arguments are veiled attempts to target 2S LGBTQIA children and families. And I wonder if we have any factual evidence to substantiate that because we're making that statement and yet I don't see any facts, like when, when, are you saying that? Because I'm, I'm not sure what it's referring to or who. But I'd like to know. So any parent who comes to this podium about age appropriate concerns, are we going to say this about them? Like, who, who, who is referencing, like, who are we referencing when we make a statement like this?
Thank you, staff. And I'd like to thank you for sending the email about real, referring it to staff so they could follow up with the with the school, which they have done, I believe. Or sorry, Executive Officer Dugan McKenzie.
I think I'd like to go back to last Monday and remind, through you, Madam Chair, and remind trustees that in the delegation where the delegate started, was in conversations around surveys, asking questions around gender identity. And, and so when we talk about veiled arguments that are really an attack against the 2S LGBTQIA community, trustee Watson, that's what we're referring to. That people use certain coded language to attack trans community and make their lives a little bit more unsafe. So that, that's what that was in reference to. You've a few times talked about the parent's misunderstanding of what is readability level, grade four, grade five readability versus the audience. And I don't know if associate director Shans wants to speak to that again.
Associate Director Shans.
Through the chair to trustees, I think some further information I'd like to share with trustees. Some will be aware, but others may not, that we do have a very transparent process for the selection and de-selection of text in our libraries. That information is on our website, is accessible to all families. There is a process by which families can access to raise concerns regarding text. And I can share with trustees that that process is very seldom accessed. We have hundreds of thousands of texts in our, in our collections. We have hundreds of thousands of texts in our, in our collections. And very, very seldom is that process accessed. I can share with trustees that in almost every time that that process is accessed. It is raising concerns over texts that have been added to the collection. To support our two S LGBTQ community. There is a consistent uh a consistent trend in that how that process is accessed. And and as the director has spoken, that is a concern for the educators in this room and the leaders in this room.
So so.
Thank you.
Follow up.
Quick follow up?
Yes, I I just want, I just wanna be clear. So. When we say, when we have parents who come forward and talk about age appropriateness. So and it's over a number of topics because I've heard from multiple parents where they have said. We're not against anyone. We just believe that it's just not age appropriate for their child. We have a religious accommodation review policy. For sim- for s- for something similar. So if parents are saying, you know what? Um they wanna opt out, just like on the surveys, you're opting out. I did not hear anyone state that they were against any group. In fact. When the the answer, the question was um asked tonight. We were told that this book is geared towards thirteen and fourteen-year-olds. And I think that. What we're doing is we're agreeing with the delegate that it's not, it's not appropriate for grade four and five. So I just wanna be careful of us judging anyone in particular. We don't know. Can't judge people's hearts, can't judge people's motives. When people come forward and parents come forward, I was one of them about age appropriateness. We have to take them for their word. We have to believe what they're saying. We cannot jump to conclusions. That, oh, well, you're against this person, you're against this. Very clearly. I have not heard anybody say I'm against these groups. I have not heard it.
Okay, we'll let staff respond. You were gonna ask a question. Go ahead, associate director Shans.
Uh through the chair to trustees, I I think some additional information may may be important to this conversation. For anyone who has read that text, they will know that it is an incredibly complex read. Uh the author uses a very complex style of metaphor and and. Would not be typically something that a a a an elementary student or a young elementary student would engage in. I can also share with trustees that some evidence has come forward uh since the delegation. That has raised the question of who actually signed out that text. And that is something that we are currently investigating. I don't know the outcome of that investigation at this point. Uh but it is something that we are looking into. And the question has been raised uh or. The the evidence has been brought forward that it may not have been the student that signed out that text.
Thank you, associate director Shans. Um trustee Ramsey for the second time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I think most of the points has been covered. Uh I just want to once again just register um. My displeasure with the way um staff approached this. Um. The, you know, a parent um. Uh I spoke with a parent over the weekend. And I I agree with their description of what the board did. They said that um. This is a strawman fallacy. The real subject of the concerns that were shared by the parent was not addressed. But instead replaced with a false one. And that is what the board, that's what I'm hearing from staff, that's what they're responding to. They've created the situation as if the parent was here asking for us to not acknowledge our LGBTQ. Friends and families and neighbors. And that's not the case. Um we heard what they um that that the parent was here about. And still, his concerns have not been addressed. All we're going to do as a board of trustees. Is to be the board's representative to the public. They would may as well resign. And allow things of the minister to run things out of Queens Park. It's that's, that's the only function that we can have here. I mean, if we really talk about. Um the issues that staff have created. Uh to justify uh weaponizing the empathy towards the the this um.
Trustee Ramsey, withdraw that?
Trustee Ramsey withdraw that kind of language when he's talking about the work that staff is doing.
Trustee Ramsey?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I will withdraw because I believe that is. Okay, and the entire infrastructure of the board was dropped to beer on this parent. It is unfair. I totally agree with trustee Watson. It is unfair. The entire, I would. I assume, but a number of people that stood up here and staff. That means the entire communications apparatus that top spears paid for was utilized against him. And all he was asking about was whether or not this book was appropriate. For a grade four child. And all of a sudden, we're having a conversation. And looking to cause more panic amongst many of our uh relevant populations. By trying to suggest.
Yeah, there's.
Trustee Ramsey has again asked for his questions on staff.
Trustee Ramsey, you're gonna wrap up your comments. I'm gonna move on. Unless you are going to withdraw your uh disparaging comments.
I won't be withdrawing. I don't think it's disparaging. I won't withdraw. So I'll stop there.
Thank you, trustee Radlin. Did you?
You had to trust me.
Thank you.
Um. First of all, the response answered questions that were asked. Uh in terms of the blist eye, what I read was that it was not available in elementary schools. It was only available in secondary school libraries. And it was available online. So I think that answers the question as to whether. A grade four or five student could access the book in the school library. I would also like to say that there's a delegate who used the phrase child abuse. Which makes their stats clear. Language such as that does not indicate an openness to all identities. We have been talking about parents. And I would like to say some parents. There are many parents who have supported this response. There are many parents who support the legislation and actions of the board. There are many parents who support the staff, their hard work. And their attempt to make everyone feel validated and accepted. And while it is true that there will always be some people that disagree. It is disrespectful to suggest. That because someone does not agree with you and someone argues to the contrary. That they're in some way weaponizing anything.
Trustee Racine?
Um I would like to just make a motion for a quick five-minute break. Okay, just second for.
Can we combine that with a motion to extend? As we're at nine.
We'll do that when we come back.
Okay.
Um. Sir, a second to, is uh, or is a motion to a five-minute recess? There's a second for that? Oh, trustee Radlin, are you most seconding the motion for a five-minute recess?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? And opposed? And abstained. Okay, I'm not carried. So we'll take a five-minute recess and we will reconvene at. Nine twenty-three. Trustee Meisner, all in favor of extending until ten o'clock? Thank you. That's unanimous.
And I do have a a a further comment.
Go ahead.
So quite properly, there are laws, policies, bylaws. Uh procedures preventing child abuse. Uh and accusations of child abuse are serious. False accusations of child abuse can be career limiting for those who work with children. We need to take them very seriously. And it's very appropriate for the board to react uh strongly. When a false allegation of child abuse is dropped in one of our meetings. And I want to again commend everyone involved in in writing and posting that letter. Uh for reacting in the way that they did to uh to this comment.
Thank you.
And I'm through uh the speakers list and I would just like to add my thanks to staff for uh your letter. Um it was well-written. It cleared up a lot of misconceptions and misinformation. Um it responded to the accusation of child abuse, which was unfounded. And um it was transparent to the community. And I hope that this letter um lets the two S LGBTQIA plus community. Students, staff and families know. That uh we will continue to provide a safe, inclusive working environment, learning and working environment in our schools. So thank you for that letter. Okay. We are moving on through our agenda to board reports and the next one is.